Okay. I'll ask for everyone to come to order, please. Southern Shores Planning Board, September 18, 2023. If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Leisures.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. I'm gonna read a brief statement about what we're gonna be doing tonight. So if you will listen up, I think it'll explain what we need to do. First off, welcome, everyone, and thank you for coming out tonight to be a part of our town's land use governing process. The planning board has thoroughly reviewed the material provided to us from the applicant on behalf of Gingite LLC and town staff. We will have a public comment period prior to the start of our review and another after we finish tonight's deliberation. There's a sign-up sheet in the back for each public comment. It's right back there on that back table. I will... We will use a three-minute time limit. When the dinger goes off or however, you know when three minutes is up, I will ask Wes to silence the alarm for an additional few seconds, up to maybe a minute, my discretion. But please don't take advantage of that little bit of extra time. I think we'll have numerous people that want to speak, and we'll want to get them all in. This is not a question-and-answer Town Hall-style meeting. When you come up to the podium, please state your name, address. When you come to the podium, direct your comments to the planning board members, us up here. This meeting tonight will be our starting point in this review process. What we are unable to get to tonight will be resumed at our October meeting. This is a complex review and will likely take at least two meetings, if not more, to complete. So with that out of the way, I'm gonna ask if I can get approval from the board to rearrange the agenda slightly. I would like to move the Rules of Procedure, which is under New Business B, up to the number seven slot. And then, from Public Comment down, we'll reorder the numbers. So everything stays the same. We just take Rules of Procedure amendments and go up to slot number seven, and then Public Comment would be eight going down. Other than that, can I get a motion to amend the agenda to that?
I make a motion to.
Okay, thank you, Jan. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tony. Any discussion on that? All in favor of that amendment, raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay. All right. First order of business, and if you'll bear with us, we'll do it, get a little bit of housecleaning out of the way, and then we're gonna get into Public Comment. First order of our business is election of officers. Wes, do you want to... You got any comment about that?
No, sir. Every year, you all elect a new chairperson and a new vice-chairperson. So today, y'all just need to elect or appoint a new chairperson and vice-chairperson.
Okay, well, I'll open up the floor for nominations for chairperson.
I'll nominate Andy, especially with tonight's meeting. I'll second.
All right, I don't know if we'd need a second, but I would guess all in favor of me sitting in the middle chair for another year?
Aye.
All right, now, I will open up the floor for the vice-chair of the planning board. And I would like to nominate Tony to go another year, if he will do so.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of Tony DiBarnardo as vice-chair, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. One off, okay. Minutes from the last meeting, they're in front of us. I wasn't here for that meeting, so August the 9th. So I looked through them briefly just to see if there was any major problem with tycoas or anything. I didn't see anything. Does anybody have a correction or a comment?
No. I move to approve the minutes of the meeting of August 9th, 2023, of the planning board.
Could I get a second? Ed, seconds. Any discussion on that? All in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay. Now, we're gonna go up to approval of variance dash 23 dash 01 order. And that is in your packet. It is an order denying the variance. I think everything's straightforward. Can you bring that up on the screen, Wes, just to make sure we're... You got the last page, if you would. Okay. Indiana says, therefore, based upon all of the foregoing, the application for variance is denied. We had granted in our packet, but that was a typo. So do I need to... Would we make any motion formally to accept that or vote or...
No, I think you can just... Someone can make a motion to approve it as amended with denied.
Okay. I will make that motion to approve as amended. Can I get a second? Ed, seconds. Any discussion on that? All in favor of moving that forward, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None?
If I may interject real quickly, just for everyone to know what that was, because you probably don't know what it is. What that was, it was five below requesting for a larger sign that is allowed in the town of Southern Shores. They wanted a very large sign, and it was beyond the scope of what we allow. So we denied that variance, and they had to put the same size sign as the other people are held to, just so you know.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. Okay. Okay, now, we're gonna take up Rules of Procedure amendments that we have in our packet. I think everything, the first two pages are okay. There's things being struck in yellow. And then, the items being added on the third page would be applicable for what we are looking at. Wes, do you... Could we, as far as absences for the member, absences, insert alternates in there as well? I mean, what's your thought on that?
Yes, sir, that's a clarification that I think makes it clear.
Yeah. Everybody understand that, that on top of members, and the alternates are members, I suppose, of the planning board, but they're alternates. So just to clarify, I would think alternates would need to be in that section there. Y'all agree?
Yeah, members and including the alternate members.
Right. Yeah. Take care of it right there. So basically, what it's saying is absences that you have to unexcuse, you would be asked to be removed. Pretty cut and dry.
Maybe what I did success instead of doing that down there, because you probably use members throughout. It is under section of applicability of policy. Put a statement up there under the end of the paragraph that just says that the policy applies to regular and alternate members.
Okay.
And then that covers it throughout.
Yeah. I'm fine with that. Are you okay with that, Tony?
It's fine.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Michael, by the way, is an alternate, but we're gonna get him up here soon. Okay. Any discussion on the remainder of what's in here? Everything else is as it is written in the ordinance. Quite sure what that last page was for, with the arrows going back and forth, but doesn't pertain to this, I don't think. Anybody else see anything in here that gets him pause? All right. Well, I would entertain what Michael had said conveyed to Wes as far as the alternates are concerned. We approve these rules of procedure. Anybody got anything to say further about that? Need a motion to approve?
Approve the rules of procedure as amended.
Okay, I'll make that motion. Second, anyone? Ed, seconds over here? Okay, any discussion on that?
If I may, Mr. Chairman. I'm being told that the folks in the back are having a hard time here. So if you all can make sure that your mics are in front of you and try to speak into the mic, thank you.
Sure, I'll knock it over. Okay. All right, so we take a vote on that? All in favor of that slight amendment to rules of procedure? Raise your hand.
Aye.
None opposed? Okay. Did everyone get to sign up that wants to sign up? We'll give you one more shot. I might ask at the end of the last one, we've got at least 10. So anyway, if you will, when I call your name, come to the podium and state your name, address, and try to keep it to three minutes. You're gonna get a warning from Wes. So I'll be judicious in letting you know if things have been taken advantage of.
There's a timer on the device on there.
Yeah, but it makes a noise, doesn't it?
It will, yes, sir.
Can you cut that noise off when they're at the end of three?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right. The first person is Richard Filling. Please come up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Wes, Michael? My name is Richard Filling. I live at 131 Crooked Back Loop in Southern Shores. My first question would be, as I understood before we started that this is more of a comment period and not a question-and-answer, because I do have several questions.
We're here to listen to you tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. As far as the new development is concerned, my primary concerns are the appropriate approvals that may or may not be required in association with the proposed development. And my real questions and/or concerns are, well, perhaps maybe not concerns, are that all of the approvals from the various federal and state agencies be appropriately addressed and applied for, such as under the Clean Water Act, Sections 10, 401, and 404 of the Clean Water Act, as they are addressed through the Army Corps of Engineers, Department of Natural Resources, and a number of other various agencies, that they are all applied for appropriately and addressed prior to and before any development is begun. And that the township at least provide those various approvals as they may apply to this particular project. And of course, that would apply to any navigable waters, wetlands, both dredge and fill and construction, and also within floodplains of the waters of the United States. So again, I would strongly recommend that the community at large be made aware of any of those approvals as they may be required. That's all. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Filling. Okay. Next is Dixie Kirby.
I'm eating a soapbox. Hi, my name is Dixie Kirby. I live at 321 North Dogwood Trail here in Southern Shores. This just came to my attention today that this development was in the offing. And I was actually somewhat surprised to see the size and extent of it. Southern Shores was founded as a low-density residential community. Frank Stick's vision was to have, you know, housing for people who were gonna live here all year round with the same density as you would expect in a subdivision, perhaps. But I think this really goes against the spirit of a residential area in a beautiful natural area where you try to preserve the natural environment. If I'm correct, the lot is on some swamp there at the head of Gingite Creek. And it just amazes me that anyone would either consider building there and that it would not affect the natural waters for recreation, for fishing, for the environment. And I just... I'm really opposed to this. I know that you'll do your due diligence and, as the first person was talking about, you know, apply for the appropriate permits, et cetera. But even with that, I think it's just really against the spirit of Southern Shores, and it would be a terrible precedent, and it would change our community not for the better. Thank you for considering.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Kirby. Okay, next is Matt Huvan. Matt?
Hello, my name is Matt Huvan. I live at 110 Landing Trail, and I am the designated representative for the Southern Shores Landing community. I am very pleased to see the staff report includes the condition for the 50-foot setback applicable to buildings and other facilities, such as parking spaces, incinerators, trash collection areas, et cetera, and to preserve the natural vegetative buffer for both Southern Shores Landing and All Saints Episcopal Church. We feel these two conditions are reflective of the town's community vision, which in part states, "The town of Southern Shores is a quiet coastal community comprised primarily of low-density single-family homes interspersed with passive and active recreational facilities, navigable waterways, forests, and open space. The town's identity is intimately tied to its natural resources, history, and residential nature." In addition to the conditions included in the staff report, our community would also ask the planning board to look closely at the entry-exit onto Landing Trail. The entry-exit, as shown on the site plan, has potential to cause a lot of issues due to the abrupt turning radius off the bypass and the small size of the road entrance and exit. With a high-traffic volume anticipated for this size development, there is an increased risk of possible injury to pedestrians on the sidewalk, and especially the children who ride their bikes to school, as well as cars trying to get in and out of our community. Another concern is the ongoing maintenance of the wastewater treatment facility that our community relies on and is owned by the applicant. Any approval for this development should include a long-range plan for maintenance and capacity to ensure the viability of this facility. We are also concerned about the stormwater retention pond and stormwater runoff from the property. As we all know, this area can receive a tremendous amount of rain during storms. With the amount of solid surface area this project will bring and the location of the retention pond overflow area, there will be a potential for excessive flooding, not only to our community, but to the church as well. We hope the planning board will take our concerns into consideration as well as impose all the conditions in the staff report when making a decision on this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huvan. Okay, next up is Arlene Arnold.
Yeah, I'm gonna go stick, but I would defer to Lynn Usher first.
Okay. Okay, go ahead. Sure.
I have had Wes distribute copies of material that I prepared on behalf of the Vestry of All Saints Episcopal Church. And so my comments basically are an overview of that. My name is Lynn Usher. I live at 121 Ocean Boulevard, and I'm a member of the Vestry of All Saints Episcopal Church. The nine members of the Vestry have a fiduciary responsibility to our parishioners and the dioceses of East Carolina to maintain and enhance the value and usefulness of our buildings and grounds. We also take seriously our responsibility to reach beyond our parish. Using revenues from holidays and All Saints After Dark, we have contributed more than $200,000 to, in the past decade, to support a variety of community service programs. We also have the All Saints School, a Montessori preschool that operates each weekday throughout the year. The proposed development will inevitably intrude on ministries in our outdoor sanctuary, a natural area that includes a columbarium, which holds the ashes of parishioners and family members. This area also includes a labyrinth and walking paths between stations of the cross, both of which allow parishioners and others in the community to walk in peaceful solitude, to prayerfully contemplate their lives, and to remember those who have passed. We know from experience with Hurricane Irene that the plan to build an infiltration basin with an overflow weir aimed directly at the education wing of our administration building will exacerbate a known risk to those buildings and grounds. An increased volume of stormwater runoff would jeopardize church operations when similar storms recur. A recent article in the Virginian Pilot that I shared with you described efforts in Kitty Hawk to, quote, "alleviate the overdensification of our town." While densification may not be standard parlance in land use planning, it captures the risk of misusing wetland areas to justify more intensive development in areas that should be protected. The impact of densification is reflected in my family's experience in Kitty Hawk from the mid-'50s to the mid-'90s. After experiencing nearly complete isolation through the '70s, my grandparents' cottage near the 4.5-mile post was surrounded by a large condominium development and multiple strip shopping centers in the 1980s and '90s. Fortunately, we found a lot in Southern Shores that is surrounded by permanent open spaces, planned set-asides that counteract densification. Using the example of our predecessors, therefore, I urge you not to abandon the managed-growth principles on which our town was founded and to insist on restraint in the development of the parcel adjacent to All Saints Church. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Ms. Arnold?
My name is Arlene Arnold. I am also a member of All Saints Episcopal Church. I'm here because I'm very concerned about the children's playground. My husband and I put that playground in in memory of our granddaughter, Maddie Shue, who was killed during Sandy Hook. That playground means a lot to us and to the church, the children of the church, the children of the school, and the children of the community. With a retention pond sitting right next to the playground, I'm concerned about mosquitoes and those types of things affecting the children who play in that playground. Just go by there every day. The Montessori kids are out there in that playground. That's what I wanted to tell you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next person is Willow Nash.
Good evening. I'm Willow. I live on 28 Duckwoods Drive in Southern Shores. We moved here three years ago to a wonderful neighborhood in Southern Shores to call our home, 365 days a year. I'm concerned about the safety of children and animals, and then also the wetlands, and then, of course, what comes along with that with your fishing game, the deer that roam. And it makes it for a nice, quiet piece that you can walk around. And with another development like that taking away from the residential area that we currently have, I believe it would be in the best interest not to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Tim Nash.
Name's Tim Nash. Yes, that is my wife. So first of all, yes, I'm kind of glad that everybody went before me because I just found out about this today. So some of the stuff that I'll have here is rhetorical questions, but it's mostly what everybody has said already, especially Dixie. So first of all, we're gonna have more excessive traffic that I can't handle currently as we're coming out of Duckwoods Drive. I mean, yes, we don't have a traffic light. That doesn't bother me. But now that Tetris is so bad as it is already, if I don't leave at 6:00 a.m. or at least 1:00 p.m., nothing in between, I can't get out of my road. So another development wants to go up there and add more traffic. That leads into, what about a septic system? What about the water? Everybody else has talked about the excessive of overruns when you build something. Because when you build something, now water runs more smoothly. Let's also look at the point that you can't take this back if it happens. How much has been taken away since 1960? How much has been taken away since 1960? I've been here three years, way before my time, but when I look at old-school pictures, what's left? You can't build land. So when that's built, you can't take it back. Let's look at the police department. I don't know all of the exact stats of it, but many of them are underpaid. We don't have enough. Now you're adding more people. Where's the other police officers? I come from the background of a police officer and a correctional officer, so I know there's not enough of them. So you have to look and put into that also into play. Don't know what's going to go on with taxes, what's the value of our houses now when you add in condos? That's not going to add the value of anything around everything that we've worked for our whole life. Look at the wetlands. Everybody's already talked about that. We don't need to go over that, but you're taking away from that. You cannot get that back. That's it. It's over. You'll never get it back, and it's done. So I look at it this way. If that goes in, all it does is start to remind me of Virginia Beach, which I hate. I went there 35 years ago. Yes, I know things change. I get it. But when we were on vacation, when we first moved down here, let's go there, at 4:00 in the afternoon, I looked at the weather, and there's no storm coming in. Why is the beach dark? Because you have these big hotels. It all starts with that and everything else that's come about. So to me, absolutely, absolutely opposed to it. No more building. That's it.
Thank you. All right, next speaker is Caroline Rhodes.
I'm Malcolm State bizarre.
Come on, you sure? Okay, Caroline, you sure you?
My little nose.
All right, we're going to scratch. Caroline, and Elizabeth Ryan is next.
Hi.
Hello.
Good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Ryan. I was raised in Southern Shores, lived on 19 Spender Trail. As many of you all can attest, I grew up playing in the canals and woods in this neighborhood. Now I have two small children that love nothing more than playing in those very creeks, canals, and woods, and I had a son at All Saints as well. I say all of that to say that I have a deep sense of love and pride for this community. I wanted to speak tonight to express my strong opposition to the proposed special-use permit. As a concerned member of our community, I believe that this development, if approved, would have detrimental effects on this town and the quality of life for its residents and future residents. First and foremost, I am concerned about the increase in traffic, like everyone has said, congestion that this development could bring to our already congested area. The proposed project's location is close in proximity, as we all know, to a major highway, the bridge, neighborhoods, and our local elementary school. A traffic impact assessment needs to be conducted in order to see the disastrous effects this development would have on the area and immediately surrounding areas. With the addition of both commercial and residential spaces, the influx of vehicles on our roads will drastically increase. This will not only make traffic in our area more difficult to maneuver safely, but could also pose safety risks to pedestrians and other road users. There will also be a drastic increase in boat traffic, which could pose other safety concerns for the narrow canals and passageways. Furthermore, the environmental impact of this development cannot be ignored. This town has a unique and natural beauty that we should strive to preserve and protect. The construction and operation of such a massive development will result in the destruction of natural habitats. It will increase pollution and strain on local resources. When looking at the proposed area of development, how is it possible that the soil, or in this case, sand, could even remotely handle the wastewater from a development this size? We want to see an environmental impact assessment done by a third party that says this development wouldn't have any effects on the environment and the surrounding areas. As locals, what we all see is that an increase in boat, foot, and car traffic will cause absolute devastation to the surrounding marshes, canals, creeks, and neighborhoods that we should all be working to preserve. If we don't try to save it, who will? While I understand the importance of development for the growth of our community, it should not come at the cost of compromising this town's character, safety, natural beauty, and environment. I respectfully request that the town planning board takes into account the concerns of the community, because there are clearly a lot of concerns, and our future generations. This town's future depends on responsible and sustainable planning, and I believe that approving this permit would not serve the best interest of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, next speaker is Audra Craig.
Hello. My name is Audra Craig, and I live at 147 Duckwoods Drive. I can hope that the incredible impact to the environment of our small town has been considered, though I'm not fully convinced, specifically when it comes to the lot coverage that we already have that we abide by by residents. I'm just not sure how that monstrosity can sit on a lot that size. I hope that we have learned from mistakes that other coastal communities have made, you know, New Orleans, Maryland. We've seen what happens when we overbuild marshlands. We don't want that to happen to our community. I know many, many things come into consideration when something like this is being planned, but one thing I know has not been considered by anyone who thinks that this is a good idea. I'd like to present to you, that's the Kitty Hawk Elementary School yearbook. Hundreds of faces are going to smile back at you, and you can keep it for the night. I'll pick it up tomorrow. You can deliberate all you want over that. But I really invite you to take a look at every one of those sweet little faces and know that those kids are the ones riding their bikes. They're going from fishing hole to fishing hole. They are the ones on the bike paths. They're going to grandma's house. That's what our community is built on, is family and people who live their lives here. I truly think that the Outer Banks having needless condos like this, this doesn't solve anything for us. All it does is increase our traffic, make our roads and our sidewalks less safe for our kids, and as a mother of four, I truly beg of you to consider the future generations that are smiling back at you on those pages. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Jim Baker.
Good evening. My name is Tim Baker. I live at 5017 Martins Point Road. I'm the president of Martins Point Homeowners Association, so I'm bringing a voice from across the creek to echo everything that you're hearing here. We are very much opposed to this. I'm speaking on behalf of the Martins Point Community Homeowners. They're going to be impacted by this development, and especially the scale of this development. Many of the things that have been echoed here, I'm not going to address. There's two primary themes I want to focus on in this and in subsequent comments. First is traffic, and the second is the marina proposal. For the traffic, without a, in the winter, today, we can hardly get out of our neighborhood, you know, and we know what the summer looks like. So without a traffic light, it's going to be nearly impossible to make a left-hand turn out of this proposed property. So most of that traffic is going to end up turning right and coming into the entry to our neighborhood in Martins Point, the Martins Point Commercial District. That will have an enormous impact on our community and all the traffic in that area. We already know the huge congestion, that light, the danger that's associated with that, and the impact on anybody transiting through that light. So at the very least, we need to ensure that there's an aggressive traffic study, that there is a, if not requirement, strong encouragement that there be approval of a traffic light as a part of that, and I think it's allied by the conditions and distances in there. Their county commissioners have stipulated this in the past in other events, and we expect that to be the case here. The other concern, someone mentioned a moment ago, is pedestrian traffic along that roadside. That's going to be extremely dangerous for any of the pedestrians transiting along the side of the road. Any kind of an entry or curb cut is going to affect that access into that property, and the pedestrians are going to have to have very severe safety enhancements to prevent injury. There will be an increased risk. There's no question about it. The marina, there cannot be a commercial marina in this development. This is, the applicant should not be allowed to construct any kind of commercial services. Excuse me. That's my attorney calling. Cannot have any kind of commercial marina services coming out of that. It's a valuable resource for recreation, for our community, as well as the Southern Shores community and our guests. We cannot continue to overload that. The congestion weekend is incredible already. We know we have people come from outside the community to use that, but we need to restrict that. So can't be any leases. Even kayak rentals have to be very careful because of coming out in the midst of that boat traffic. So I'm very conscious of the risk. If we have commercial rentals, I'm also a commander for the Coast Guard Auxiliary, so we deal with boating safety and all the services and the injuries in this community. The most dangerous thing we do is rent boats and kayaks and jet skis to people in this community, and that congested waterway and in the creek, it would be inviting danger and injury for all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. All right, next speaker is Mike Mangum.
Thank you for your time. I'm Mike Mangum. I live at 8 Foxwood Circle in Southern Shores Landing. I'm a house designer, and I know I'm challenged a lot of times to put 10 pounds of stuff in a five-pound bag. I think what we have here is about 20 pounds in a five-pound bag. And anyway, but I've got a couple items I'd like to address. I mean, I realize they own the land, they can do certain things, but hopefully we'll restrict it enough that it's not overdeveloped. Let's see. The south entrance is what I'm, the landing, which some people have already addressed. But one of my thoughts would be, they're probably going to have to use, they own that land, they own that entrance. I would love to see some sort of curbing where they cannot turn back on landing out of that development, and that's imperative to us. We already have a problem in the summertime. We put up cones to keep people from cutting through there, and they cut through there, and it's one way once you get beyond landing, and they'll come the other way, the wrong way. I've screamed at a whole bunch of people over the years. It just, it happens. They're going to do it, and they're going to do it. And if you put 200 cars, figure it out. There's going to be, and who is going to go right when they're leaving there? Everybody's going, the ocean's to the left. All your stores and stuff are to the left. All your schools are to the left. I can go on and on. It's going to happen every day. So I highly recommend that some sort of, of a traffic study, without a doubt, but I would love to see that you could not take a left onto landing out of that development. That's going to help us a tremendous amount. I know y'all, y'all have already said some things about the 50-foot setback, and that's a big deal for us, because we got a couple people over there, and I noticed they put a dumpster about 20 foot from another, from a house. That's real nice. How would you like to have somebody put a dumpster 20 foot from your house that you've been living in for years? Anyway, the other thing is, there's a, Southern Shores Landing has an easement across that piece of property. Some of y'all don't know this, but they came to us and tried to buy it for us to move it, not to take it away, but just to move it. Those negotiations broke down. And so when they did this final, they put the swell, which is the water retention, right on our five-foot easement, which is going to be sloping about 45 degrees, and I guess somebody said something about it, because now I see a, a bridge across there, you know, a five-foot walkway, but it says "by others." We're not paying for it. I mean, we have a flat piece of property walk across right now that's our easement, and they're going to dig a hole and want us to build a bridge. That's not going to happen. So I hope that y'all will take that into consideration when you're looking at that thing. And let's see, I think that's, I think that's all I had to say. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Mike. All right, next speaker is Robert Healy.
My name's Bob Healy, and I'm a resident of 5205 Barlow Lane in Kitty Hawk, adjacent to Southern Shores. All of my predecessors have pretty much summed up the many reasons why I would be opposed to this development. And I'm just going to leave an observation. I think we've reached a point here in the Outer Banks where we have to be extremely careful about development, future development, so that we do not kill the goose that laid the golden egg. That's pretty much all I have to say, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Healy. That's all that have signed up. I would be glad to let anybody else come up here and have their say. So now's your chance. There's the podium. Ladies first.
Good evening. My name is Ann McDowell. I live at 6025 Martins Point Road, and I just wanted to make a comment that I understand that Gene Gite Creek is a designated primary fish nursery. So I would hope that as we look at CAMA permits and that sort of thing, again, I'm concerned about the marina. I've lived on the creek for 30 years now, and I fish in it, and I crab in it, and I swim in it, and my kids do. We boat in it, and I'm, I am concerned about how we calculate the impact of a marina on a shallow, the, the water in the creek is wind-driven, as we all know, and if you had a hot summer day with the water blowing from the north and the creek is emptying in a full marina, I'm not sure how CAMA calculates that impact, but I do hope that we take that into consideration when we look at this project. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Sir?
Appreciate what y'all do for the community. Thank you much. I love Southern Shores. My name's Bill Wees. I'm 6069 Martins Point Road neighbor, and just love Southern Shores. I loved their little history lesson there. That was fantastic. Thank you. So when you look at this development and the developer, you know, I don't ever slight someone trying to make money doing what they're going to do. The danger, and everyone's talked about a lot of the dangers, and you've seen with this particular developer, if you give him an inch, they're going to take it. Y'all seen the development in Kill Devil Hills? What, 12 houses? So when you look at that, like I said, I don't fault the developer trying to make money at United States of America. We can do that. What I would say is don't give an inch. That's, that's all, that's just mine, because they're going to take it, and then some. That's all I have to say, sir. Thank you for your time. Appreciate your service to the community.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak? Going once? Going twice? Okay, we're going to close this. And by the way, there is another public comment time at the end of our discussion up here tonight. So if you want to speak again, that will certainly be fine, but now I guess it's your time to sit back and listen. As we start this process, I do want to just caution you on trying not to make noise and interject comments, because we want to get through this, and, you know, it's kind of an emotional issue, so please respect that. At this time, we are going to begin the new business, which is SUP-23-01, a special-use permit application submitted by Kathleen M. Saunders, P.E.
permit application submitted by Kathleen M. Saunders, P.E. on behalf of Jingai LLC, for a mixed-use group development of commercial and residential buildings at 6195 North Croatan Highway. And at this time, I'm going to ask our planning director, Wes Haskett, to read in his staff report. So, Wes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Before you get going, can I get you to pull up GIS and just have it up on the screen? If you can take away the side piece, if you can get rid of that. Perfect. Thank you, Wes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are at new business, this is SUP-23-01. As you indicated, the applicant is Jingai LLC, the applicant's representative is Kathleen M. Saunders, P.E. with Quible and Associates, and the requested action is a special use permit for a mixed-use group development of commercial and residential buildings. The site location is 6195 North Croatan Highway. The zoning for the property is two different zoning districts, C General Commercial and R1 Low Density Residential District. Its existing land use, according to the town's currently adopted land use plan, is commercial. The surrounding land use and zoning, to the north, is residential, R1 Low Density Residential District; to the south is Highway 158, Town of Kitty Hawk jurisdiction; to the east is residential, C General Commercial District; and to the west is Jingai Creek, OSW Ocean and Sound Waters District. Its physical characteristics are vacant, and the applicable regulations from the town zoning ordinance are Article 3, Article 4, Article 6, Article 7, and Article 10. Staff's analysis is that the applicant seeks a special use permit for a mixed-use group development of commercial and residential buildings at 6195 North Croatan Highway. The proposed development consists of one residential building, which is the east building, and one building with residential units, retail area, office space, and a restaurant, this is the west building. The total number of proposed residential units is 36. Parking areas include the use of permeable pavement in order to be eligible for a maximum gross lot coverage of 67% instead of 60%. Currently, the proposed lot, gross lot coverage is 64.2%. The proposed net lot coverage for the residential buildings and parking areas is 27.4%. A 20-foot vegetative buffer is shown along the northern property line adjacent to the All Saints Episcopal Church property. A vegetative buffer consisting of one under-story tree and one shrub alternated 10 feet on center is proposed along a portion of the eastern property line adjacent to Southern Shores Landing. A five-foot vegetative buffer is proposed along the southern property line adjacent to the Highway 158 right-of-way, which has been modified so that it does not come within 50 feet of existing Dominion power pole lines. Proposed signage for the development includes two monument or freestanding signs and six commercial parking-only signs. There are 200 proposed parking spaces, including credit for three spaces for 300 bicycle racks, with 42 of them being permeable, and 199 spaces are required. Sanitary sewer for the development is to be collected via a gravity sewer network. The network will collect to an off-site lift station that will pump sewage to an existing wastewater treatment plant that currently serves Southern Shores Landing. A lighting plan and specifications have also been provided, and the lighting plan shows that the proposed lighting does not exceed one-foot candle of light at the property lines. Town staff's recommendation, the land use, the town's land use plan identifies the subject property as commercial in the C General Commercial Zoning District, which is consistent with the improvements proposed in the application. However, the subject property is adjacent to properties that are identified in the land use plan as residential. Town's land use plan contains the following goal policies and action items that are applicable to this application. Goal two, protect, enhance, and support land uses that are compatible with surrounding land uses, and maintain the existing character of Southern Shores. Policy two, the community values and the town will continue to comply with the founder's original vision for Southern Shores. A low-density residential community comprised of single-family dwellings on large lots, served by a small commercial district for convenient shopping and services located at the southern end of the town. This blueprint for land use naturally protects environmental resources and fragile areas by limiting development and growth. Action item 2B, the town shall encourage the use of low-impact development techniques and sound environmental preservation practices for all new development, remodeling, and redevelopment within Southern Shores. Policy seven, support stormwater management programs that reduce flooding and improve coastal water quality. Action item 7B, encourage the use of low-impact development, vegetative buffers to filter stormwater, impervious surface limits, and innovative stormwater management alternatives to reduce runoff and to improve water quality. Policy 26, promote open space, tree protection, and natural vegetation diversity. Action item 26B, encourage lot preparation methods that preserve natural vegetation and minimize clear coating. Town code section 36-207C establishes that special use permits shall be subject to conditions and modifications relating to impacts on adjacent properties, transportation and transportation systems, transportation interconnectivity, stormwater, utilities and telecommunications facilities, including capacity, vegetation and other elements of the natural environment, noise, hours of operation, and other factors that the town council finds applicable, and additional regulations and requirements imposed by the town council as provided in Article 10 of the zoning ordinance. Town staff recommends that the board recommend conditional approval of the application to the town council with the following conditions. Number one, the following approvals shall be issued prior to submission of a building permit application. A, Soil Erosion Sedimentation Control Plan Permit for Land Disturbance Over One Acre from the NCD-EQ. B, Stormwater Management Permit from the NCD-EQ. C, NCDOT Driveway Permit and/or Encroachment Application for Work in a State Right-of-Way. C, Modification to Permit Number WQ0017224 from the NCD-NQ, NCD-EQ. E, Camma Permit from the NCD-EQ. F, Review and Approval of Potable Water Distribution System Modifications or Extensions by the Dare County Water Department. G, Receipts for Payment of Water Connection Fee from the Dare County Water Department. H, Water Main Extension Permit from the NCD-EQ. I, Lot Disturbance Stormwater Management Permit from the town. And J, Approval from the Dominion Energy Transmission Group. Recommended Condition Number Two, prior to submission of construction drawings, an updated fire hydrant flow test must be conducted and witnessed by town staff. Three, Construction drawings shall demonstrate compliance with needed fire flow requirements and all other applicable fire code requirements. Four, The site plan identifies a marina. The marina is a series of docks and piers which are not permitted in the C General Commercial Zoning District, and as a result, the proposed marina, proposed dock picnic area, kayak storage, and proposed dock that extends into Jingai Creek cannot be approved as a part of this application. Number five, if NCDOT requires a traffic impact assessment or traffic study, the requirements in the traffic impact assessment or traffic study must be satisfied prior to submission of a building permit application. Number six, maintain a 50-foot setback from the eastern property line adjacent to Southern Shores Landing. This is applicable to buildings and other facilities such as parking spaces, incinerators, trash collection areas, et cetera, and preserve the existing natural vegetative buffer. Number seven, maintain a 50-foot setback from the northern property line adjacent to All Saints Episcopal Church, also applicable to buildings and other facilities such as parking spaces, incinerators, trash collection areas, et cetera, and preserve the existing natural vegetative buffer. And lastly, condition number eight, recommended condition number eight, is that the applicant must strictly abide by all requirements of the town code, and must also strictly comply with all other applicable local, state, and federal requirements.
Thank you, Wes. I think that's the most extensive staff report I've had since I've been sitting up here for five years.
Yes, sir, I've always wanted to add a thing.
At this time, I see the applicant, I'm not sure Ms. Saunders is here, but Mr. Strader's here. You guys are welcome to come up to the podium and speak to what you've heard so far. I think there may be some space over for you to spread out, if you need to.
It's okay. Good afternoon, I'm Sumit Gupta, the applicant. Appreciate your time today. I wasn't expecting so many comments, but I was listening very intently, and I may not agree with some of them, but, you know, we all live here together in this community, and everybody has the right to have their thoughts. And, yeah, anyway, I appreciate it, and it's good, even though in this case, it's against something I'm proposing, it's still really good to live in a community like this, that people are concerned about what's going on. So, even though this may go badly for my opinion in this case, I do value everything that I heard today. So, this, a gentleman mentioned that if you give this developer an inch, you know, that'll... This is one of these things, we weren't trying to take an inch. There's not one thing we're asking for variance, we study the rules. There's an ordinance in Southern Shores, and we followed it, the actual rules, to the T. From height, this is not a high-rise, it's no taller than the height limitations of a residential house. So, it's not taller than any typical three-story house in Southern Shores. From lot coverage, to every dimensional ordinance, we meet, and that's why, again, the town staff, which we worked closely with on this application, to cover every item. So, going into this, I knew, and especially in a town like this, don't ask for anything. Don't try to change the rules, so we haven't. We haven't asked for one thing that doesn't meet the ordinance. Now, again, we could still debate whether that's right or not, but I do want to point that out. That was the goal, is to not ask for anything. This property was fully approved, building permit-ready, about 15 years ago to build 36 units, right before the 2008 crash. Brought a property that was approved for that, nothing has changed since then, and, again, folks may disagree with having 36 multifamily and other components to this. I believe multifamily is needed here, even in Southern Shores, but that's, again, a debate that can be had, but we do meet everything in this. There was a point made about, this is going to a sewer system. We purchased the sewer system to develop this property, and a gentleman mentioned about the maintenance. We spent now almost $900,000 on that sewer plant that was an emergency operation, still is. So, we've made a substantial investment into that sewer plant, which really had no resolution, other than somebody coming in there and putting money into it. We replaced the majority of it. We need to spend another few hundred thousand, which is part of the process, we're working with the state. We've been working with them. Now, even going through this, the two curb cuts, one is a shared access, and one is an existing curb cut. We try to also stay within the current accesses, egresses on the properties. Now, somebody made a point about the property, the traffic from this going and going into landing, Southern Shores Landing, and I am totally open for some, how we can mitigate that, whether it's curbs or signage, I think it's a fair point. The staff has reviewed it, they've made a lot of, you know, conditions, which we agree with all of them. The one condition that I am having heartburn about is a 50-foot setback, we have the 50-foot setback from a church property, and other ways higher, but from Southern Shores Landing, Southern Shore Landing is a commercial property. It, it's just a commercial property, and that property, you cannot build under RS10 residential. That was a pud, which was only allowable under a commercial designation. So, you have the patio lodge there, and now we're next to this, you can see the house is right next to this property, there's no 50-foot setback there, but the setback currently is 15 foot for a building. We put the building 34 feet away, more than double the setback. Maybe not enough, but it does, we did give some consideration to that, we did it for more than two times. There is no landscape buffer, there is no parking buffer from there, because it's two commercial properties. We self-imposed, we put our parking 12 feet away, and we included a 10-foot buffer for landscaping, all self-imposed. So, tried on this commercial property, we followed the rules, we submitted something which we thought had some consideration to the neighbors, we did increase setbacks. I would ask, you know, we agree to everything the planning staff has stipulated, there has to go through all state permits, this is just a special use permit, we have to go through all types of permitting, state and local, to get a building permit. We understand that, we want to do that, we want to build it, so it meets all rules and it is environmentally sensitive. There's no doubt that every time we build anything, there's some impact to the environment. Everybody's living in a house right now, has some impact to the environment, I don't, but we're, we were, I'm excited about, was, you know, proud of this development. I also completely understand a lot of the concerns. We brought a private property, and we're developing it per the rules, and that was our intention, and only stipulation that we're not in agreement is the 50-foot clear buffer, when we feel that we have added, increased setbacks to this property. I just wanted to say that, but I thank you guys for your time today. Reluctantly, I thank you guys for coming today. Again, the greater thing is we're one community here, everybody has the right to come here in this great democratic country that we live in, that the rules matter as well. So, I'm here to answer any questions, and I brought Mike Strader from Quible to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Strader, would you like to come up and make kind of a statement as well, because I have one thing I want to read in from John Finelli, who was our ETJ representative that couldn't be here tonight. I have some notes here that he wanted me to read in, so...
Sure.
If you want to give us a kind of an overview, and maybe a check on what Mr. Gupta said, and then we'll have questions for you, that if you can be spread out a little bit, I'm sure you'll want to get to your stuff. There's not much room up on that podium.
I'd be glad to, sure. My name is Michael Strader, I'm an engineer with Quible and Associates. Part of the, we're an engineering team, so I'm part of the engineering team, that's the engineer of record for the submitted special use permit application package submitted before you tonight. I can speak to any technical criteria. I will, let me pick up on a couple, because there were a lot of great concerns brought forth, and there were a couple I just wanted to hit on, like, for instance, I heard a lot of comments and concerns about wetlands, and if I'm not mistaken, there are no proposed wetland impacts associated with the development. And as far as stormwater, I mean, so, there is absolutely no stormwater control measures on the property now, there is no, there's no, it's not managing anything, in fact, a lot of the NCDOT roadway runoff is going unchecked to Jingai Creek as we speak. So, what we're proposing is an actual engineered stormwater system with implementation of low-impact development practices that will treat and may... implementation of low-impact development practices that will treat and manage greater than what the state water quality requirement is. There is no onsite septic systems proposed, it is centralized sewer. So there's not that increased burden on the subject parcel. Mr. Gupta may be able to speak to this, but I heard a lot of concern about boat rentals and whatnot. I didn't think that we were proposing any boat rental, any commercial boat rentals or anything like that. And then speaking about the no left turn through landing, we are proposing to implement basically we're prohibiting left turn, turning maneuvers through landing trail, but we are open to further, you know, measures. I mean, we would even go so far as to making some pretty drastic changes to that entrance if, you know, understanding from an emergency safety standpoint, I would think that there needs to be vehicular access through there, but maybe it could be breakaway bollards or something, that way there's not through traffic unchecked. And we're definitely open to, obviously, we've got to honor the NC DOT review process. So any traffic impact analysis requirements, any signalization analysis, we're certainly open to. And I mean, we're not questioning those requirements. But yes, I'm here and I can speak to any technical questions that you have.
Okay, well, I'm gonna take a few minutes and read Mr. Finelli's stuff in and then we'll get you back in the hot seat. All right. This is, just want to read this into the record, this is from John Finelli. He is our extra territorial district representative from Martin's Point. He couldn't be here today and he asked me to read this, so this is, he just prefaced what he sent to, or had Wes send to the planning board. Says to Cliff, Wes and Andy. During my time on the county planning board, and I'll back up just a second, John is the chairperson of the Dare County Planning Board and has been a member of the Dare County Planning Board for years. During my time on the county planning board, I've reviewed over 50 conditional use permits. Although I don't recall anything quite as complex or challenging as this application. Below are some issues and suggestions for your consideration. Thanks, John. Dominion Power easement. The last thing I saw from the applicant indicated they had preliminary approval to park vehicles within the 70-foot wide easement under the transmission line. That needs to be nailed down. The last time I dealt with the power company, which is Dominion Power Company, on a similar issue, they required a formal application that the applicant should be able to provide a copy of and a formal written response. Lighting, lights should not cast a glare across the residential use boundaries. Lights should not cast a glare into the waterways or marsh as it interferes with wildlife. Noise, noise generating activity should end at 10:00 PM. This includes music and live entertainment that might take place at a restaurant or other commercial establishments. Signage. Under a special use permit, I believe the town has the right to place restrictions on signage beyond what is stated in the sign ordinance. This would include a requirement that signs not be eliminated on commercial buildings after certain hours and possibly limits on the signage at the entry to the development. And then he is voicing Martin's Point concerns from people that live in Martin's Point and some of which have spoken here tonight. Traffic, without a traffic light, it will be nearly impossible to make a left-hand turn out of this property. As a result, much of the traffic will end up making a right-hand turn, then turning into the service road at Martin's Point and using the Martin's Point commercial properties as a turnaround. The service road was never designed or intended for this use. This area is already congested and the added traffic will create delays and safety issues as well as being an imposition on Martin's Point commercial property owners. It is reasonable to require the applicant to conduct a traffic study as part of the standard SUP review. The Dare County Commissioners have required traffic studies under similar circumstances, the most recent being the SUP application for Cluster Homes in Wanches. As part of the traffic study, the applicant should seek approval for a traffic light, whether that light is paid for by NC DOT or the applicant. There are already quite a few traffic lights in this area, but this will not impede traffic if they are coordinated. A traffic light at an entrance to this property should be placed such that it would be 900 feet from the nearest light. Such short distances already exist at other locations on 158, including lights in Hamburger Alley and Katy Yates that are only 450 feet apart. Marina, under no circumstances should the applicant be allowed to construct a commercial marina or conduct any type of commercial water-based activities. Gengate Creek is a valuable resource for recreational activities for the residents of Southern Shores and Martin's Point. It is often congested, particularly on summer weekends. A commercial marina has the potential to ruin this area for the residents and there is nothing more dangerous than a tourist renting a boat or jet ski. Having said that, I believe that the residents of the Saga condominium should have access to the water and be able to enjoy the area as I have. As such, any boat slip should be assigned and deeded to the individual condo owners with no more than one slip for each property. Boat slips shall not be rented or leased. Boat and jet ski rentals should be prohibited. Commercial boat operations, including cruises, sightseeing, parasailing and others should be prohibited. If kayak rentals are allowed, I think they should be confined to Gengate Creek, not Gengate Bay. Those who venture into Gengate Bay are a menace to boaters and a danger to themselves. They are just trying to have a good time, but many don't know how to paddle and are clueless as to water safety, particularly around other boats. During construction, no vehicles involved in construction shall turn on the service road at Martin's Point. Quasi judicial hearing. As an ETJ representative, I believe I have standing and should be allowed to testify at the hearing no matter on matters involving Gengate Creek and Gengate Bay, as these waters are in the ETJ. I also believe that a representative of Martin's Point Homeowners Association, President Tim Baker or other, has standing and should be allowed to testify since the proposed development borders Martin's Point and has an impact on our residents with regards to noise and lighting and on traffic that may turn into our entry. And that ends Mr. Finelli's comments. So just wanted to get those in. And now, I guess we can flip over to what I've told the Mr. Strayer and Mr. Gupta, what I've told or asked the, my fellow board members is that we're gonna go through your site narrative that you developed for us and we're gonna kind of go through it page by page and have you answer some questions and explain that site narrative in real terms. So anyway, if board members can turn to the site narrative and possibly get Wes to bring it up. Mr. Strayer, I don't know if you want to try to get it done from there or if there's a room over there that you can spread out. Do you, do you want to start off with the overview? And I mean, I'm, I've made a few notes, I'm sure everybody else has too. The over, the, in the overview, the site consists of 6.96 acres. Can you explain that number to me?
So, can you hear it from here?
Talk a little bit louder.
We can, but they might not be able to, okay?
You can put some stuff up there, Wes.
The deeded, the deeded parcel area, because keep in mind that, that the applicant, the owner does have deed to the bottom of Gengate Creek Boat Basin, basically all the way up to, if you pull, when we were looking at GIS earlier, the full extent of that entire parcel area is what the 6.96 acres is. But I did try to clarify that when you take those coastal wetlands on the, on the northern side and when you take the surface water body out, I did try to list out the, the net parcel area also.
I mean, that, that's pretty self-explanatory on page three on the site plan, but I, I'm just curious, the Dare GIS has it at 5.2 acres, why, why would why would that be? And you're at 6.96, are you telling us that that parcel owns the basin bottom? And you can include that in, in the total area?
So they do have a deed that it does include the basin bottom, but we're not trying to account for that?
I, I understand that, but it's just, I'm sure Dare County tax offices would like to change from 5.2 you know, acres to 6.96. And I'd be glad to let them know, as the chairman of the planning board, but seems like you're telling me that you, Mr. Gupta's owns the creek bottom there. I'm just wondering if that's
I'm just reading what's in the recorded deeds at the registered deeds office.
Anybody?
Yeah, I have a quick question for you. Your gross coverage is 64.2 percent. What is that off of? Is that off of 5.19? Is that off of 4.55? What, what, what number do you base these? When we get to that at 64.2, but I'd like to know before we go through this, what the number is based off of?
Yeah, so it is exclude, it excludes the surface water body and the coastal wetlands? And that is the 4.55 acres?
Okay, so, so your gross is 64.2, even though it starts out as 6.7, 6.96. Then it goes down with, and not including surface waters, 5.2 as but you're basing your 64.2 off of the lowest number, the 4.55?
The most, I mean, that's the most conservative, stringent way, yeah.
Let me ask you. When did the Corps, did the Corps ever definitively say that this is not wetlands?
Yeah, so all that predated us, but I believe what's on, professional, environment? George Wood, yeah. So that, that all occurred, you know, prior to Quayble being involved, but yeah, George Wood had had worked that out with, with the Corps years ago, back when I believe that bulkheadings had been conducted. Now since there have been actually, more recently, there have been a KAMA permit that also, where the Corps and KAMA confirmed what was there.
So we need to get some documentation on that, that the Corps has signed off. And the fact that that parcel, they don't care whether they're still on top of it, if it's been filled, they may take them out.
On that, Wes, if you can dial back to those numbers one more time. Blow them up just to tell you, there you go. Let's see, the the gross lot coverage down on item eight. Let's see, we're, yeah. At the top, gross lot coverage within Zone C, 249,770.5 square feet. Can you tell me where or what does that pertain to?
Right, so as Wes had mentioned in the, in the planning staff report, there are two zones for the subject parcel, and if you follow the northern boundary where, where the subject parcel is adjacent to the, the church parcel, if you follow that property line and head directly west, basically splitting the boat basin, all the land, the area to the south of that is the commercial zone property.
Including the creek bottom that you say you own.
And then everything north of that is in the R1 zone. So to demonstrate compliance with the town's ordinance with respect to lot coverage, we needed to show you the lot coverage only within the commercial zoning district. So we've only captured the area within the commercial zone, but then we also excluded the surface water body from that area. So that's what, we are using the net acreage.
I understand, and that is 1,000, I mean, 196,177.73 square feet, that is the net. Correct? Yeah, it's
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, let's see, Wes, it is, it's actually number three lot area in, in that, number three. Right there.
Yes, 198.177.
That is the net. That is what we, or you will take all your calculations from as far as lot, that number right there, net.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Everybody okay with measurements, Robert? Going down, continuing on, on page three of the overview. Second paragraph. You say the eastern building includes residential dwelling units and parking on the ground floor. The western building includes residential dwelling units, approximately 9,255 square feet of office space, approximately 6,980 square feet of retail and a restaurant at approximately 4,500 square feet. Anybody have any question about those, the eastern and western building in this overview? We'll get into it a little deeper later on.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Michael.
Is any of the office space associated with the presidential management office housekeeping?
Have not given a lot of consideration to that, but
Have not given a consideration to that, but could be.
Leasing sales.
Guess it could be.
And, Mike, are you, you're probably also talking about, because we've been talking about commercial lot coverage so far, but for the mixed-use group development, we're also required to adhere to a separate residential lot coverage. So, to where, I think where you're heading, when we computed the residential use coverage, we specifically accounted for the entire building footprint of both of the buildings and the associated parking associated with those uses.
I mean, I'm more interested and concerned about the operations side of things.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. I cannot hear Michael's questions.
So, I'll repeat them again. Can you hear that better?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, the first question was whether or not any of the office space was associated with the residential use. And then, the, because the concern is that it's going to function correctly. You know, yeah, these probably are going to be condos, but there's likely that they're going to be short-term rentals of some sort, vacation rentals. And in that type of density, you probably want some onsite management to some degree. Trash collection, laundry, custodial services.
You can manage it. Do you need an onsite office, possibly? But I think, again, we have not considered or made a decision to have an onsite office at this time.
Okay.
I do have a couple of questions. I have a couple of questions about the residential uses. Are these all condominiums? Or are they, is it an apartment complex? Or do you know?
So, I mean, they're technically 36 multifamily units. And they could be condominiumized. It's more of an offering, public offering kind of document you have to do. But I'm not sure if the town code separates, they're multifamily, 36. Whether we do long-term rentals, or sell them, or as Michael said, as far as vacation rentals, those final decisions have not been made.
I'm trying to understand who they might be most suitable for, whether, you know, older...
We're looking, I'm at it right now, it's 36 condominiums, ice condominiums. As far as like the demographic, who would move there?
And sizes, are there multiple sizes that you, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom?
There are multiple sizes. They range from two bedrooms to, I think there's some that are four bedrooms. But probably mostly twos and threes, if it were planned.
Any idea about the price point on those?
No.
Not yet. My question for the east building is, how will recycling and garbage be managed for their occupants?
So, there is, I mean, I think Mike, if you can, there's some trash collection.
There were two different refuse locations.
I saw one for the west building.
Situated, so there was one at the end of the proposed loading space on the furthest western extents of the western building.
Right, right.
Obviously, that's because of the commercialization on the ground floor, but also the residential users could use that.
Yeah, that's great.
And the other one is close to the shared entrance for the eastern building.
The dumpster out there is where residents are expected to carry their trash to? Next to that house? I don't think that's being a very good neighbor. I'm just saying, I wouldn't really like to live in a house where I had to schlep all the way across the parking lot and then, you know, wake up my neighbor to throw the trash away. But anyway, that's just a question. And you anticipate an HOA?
Yeah, it would be some type of condo association for the multifamily.
Okay, for the residential buildings. What about the landscaping and the parking and the maintenance of the property overall?
I mean, yes, you would have some, it would probably be two associations, one with the retail side, the commercial side, working with the, with the, one on the residential side. Those things will need to be figured out as far as landscaping costs, and it would definitely be on those associations to manage it. Where does it break? Maybe some, idea would be to have some overall common management landscaping across and do a share fee from commercial and residential into the landscaping.
Okay, makes sense. How many, 9,200 square feet of office space? That's a lot of office space. How many offices have you, do you have any idea of the types of offices or what the demand is for that much?
I mean, it's 96, no, this, that, our plan was that there's limited commercial on this beach. There is four other occasions, the residents that are coming there, the 9 million visitors that come to Dare County, and we just want to set aside some space for future offices. Now, again, this is, this is something that we've allocated a certain amount of space for office, a certain amount for retail and restaurant. But the exact mix of those spaces might end up changing slightly, depending on the exact kind of mixes that come and the exact market conditions. But we wanted to put a mix of all three of those, and just after, we obviously do a good mix at this time.
Okay, all right. I know Andy wants to keep going, so I'll stop.
Can I ask a question related to that? So, would you feel comfortable if there was a condition that limited the square feet to the uses that you've proposed? Or do you intend to do something different from what's proposed?
We don't intend to. We understand that if we do something different, you could come back to the board.
If there's a condition?
I'm sorry?
If there's a condition, you would have to come back and amend that?
If there's a condition, I guess we would have to come back and amend that right there. But what did you have in mind?
Conditioning it to the plans you've submitted?
Yeah, it was like 4,000 square feet's a really big restaurant, and you might want to break that up into a couple...
It's not necessarily one restaurant. This could be subdivided into two or three shops that have food and beverage. Office is not one big office. It could be separated into five or six office spaces that are 1,500 square feet. So, we're not intending this office to be 9,200 square feet. Or a restaurant necessarily to be 40, whatever it's 45.
Right.
I think, you know, we wanted to allocate certain things based on parking and other requirements that we needed to show. This is our thought of good, what a good mix could be on that side of things.
So, Michael, is that, is that taken care of? I mean, parking requirements, are the parking requirements different for retail and restaurant?
So, that's why, in working with planning staff, we did need to establish a list of those proposed uses, so that staff could review, are we in compliance with parking? Are we in compliance with this or that? So, I believe what the applicant would intend is, you know, we understand that we need to show you what's being proposed and what those allocations are. But I would suspect that there's also some degree of flexibility needed to basically understand and work with the market. So, if all of a sudden, office spaces, if the need for that plummets, if there needs to be more restaurants, whatever, but no matter what, the applicant has to come back to the town for that change of use permit. But I, you know, I just wanted to say that to point out that I think flexibility would be key to the survival of a complex development.
It's just a little hard to pin down the impacts if there's a lot of variability.
Mr. Gupta, you said 36 units, and they'll all be condos at this point?
They're multifamily units, and what our thought is to condominiumize them, yes.
And will they be offered for sale, or will you retain?
We're considering that, that's the plan right now, that could change based on market conditions, for the review. But they're 36 multifamilies, we have the ability to condominiumize and sell them, or not sell them.
How many bedrooms would you approximate that would be in those 36 units? Total number of bedrooms? I didn't see that anywhere. You know, it's a factor that wastewater is based on, so, maybe you know that, Mr. Trey? Number of bedrooms? Total?
That might not be the latest set. Let's see. Wes, on the plans, did you see wastewater notes on the site and utility plan sheet? I think it's further up. These are the notes on the utility plan for the site. So, note 12 has the residential, basically has the wastewater computations. On note 12 of the utility sheet, and that lists out the number of bedrooms, the number of potential restaurant seats, and the commercial use square footage.
Okay, well, just an approximation. I mean, you know, it doesn't have to be...
We listed 140 to have a broad overview of all the potential...
140 bedrooms?
It's what I plugged in, because that's what we've got faster forward.
Is that including, the restaurant building also has residential in it, is it not?
I'm sorry?
The restaurant, where the restaurant is proposed, does that have residential properties in there?
There is on, yes, on the northern building.
Right, and how many are they? My question was, how many of them are there, and what is their bedrooms?
I believe we have six, we're, Alex, six homes on that side.
Right, for the western building, I believe, it was a total of six multifamily units.
So, you have six more, it's not just the eastern. I want to make that clear so everybody understands.
Oh, sure.
You're talking only eastern, but you also have residential, when the western building also six.
Total combined is still 36, which is the residential.
What's the, what are they going, they're not going to be condos, they're above the restaurant, am I correct? So, what are you going to label them as?
They can also be condominiumized.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
They can also be condominiumized, those units as well, just like the commercial spaces there. I know on the eastern building, we have two and three bedrooms planned there. They're not finalized exactly, but two and three bedrooms, which are, there's 30 of them on that building right there. And on the northern building, we had identity left of six units, so we should have put more commercial space there, or we get the condos above there.
And are they also going to be two and three bedroom?
Those are likely going to be three and four bedrooms, they're bigger than the other ones.
How do you condominiumize, or however you were saying that? What is the difference between that and just an apartment? I mean, what is the process to, I can't even say it, but it rolls off your tongue a little bit better.
So, I'm an attorney, I can tell you in this kind of high-diss, laden terms of this right here. So, what, you know, you gotta, you gotta build a conduct to serve and build the code standards. And then, if that's checked, then how it's condominiumized, the way it's kind of deeded. So, there's typically this public offering statement, they say, condo document, that basically establishes the rules of those, like you basically own inside wall and outside wall and things like that. So, really, that's the way you deed them, it's more of a document that attorney prepares if you want to condominiumize. You can build multifamily and not condominiumize those, that does not allow you to sell individual units. So, our, the reason I'm saying this is kind of, it gives us the ability to sell individual condos. Now, whether we actually do that, that's still, we'll have to see at the time what makes sense. But a plan is to condominiumize those 36 units.
And there has to be a reserve set up, because these properties have to be maintained, roofs and outside painting and all of that. So, with condos, there's a reserve, and normally developer puts in certain amount...
Nobody's going to buy without touching selling the front one, without having a plan coming in that areas reserves.
And could you, could you take an apartment and turn it into a condominium?
Absolutely.
Right, you could, couldn't you?
Yeah, and to be clear, we can't regulate ownership, occupancy. So, it's, I think that's why Mr. Gupta keeps saying it's a multifamily unit.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, moving down to page number three, the existing site, the property is a mix of uplands, wetlands, and waterways. The basin has an average depth of two feet or less in the vicinity of the proposed oak slips. The basin's bottom consists of a soft muck that is at least six feet deep in some areas. It should be noted that due to low tides and the soft muck, the entire basin was not surveyed. Then I had further down, existing elevation within the site ranges from zero, which is sea level, to 10.25 feet above sea level. What, where is the 10.25 above sea level located?
Oh, that's, it looks like it's all the way at US 158.
Which side?
It's all the way along the edge of US 158.
That's about, that's at 10.25.
Right.
And where's zeros back in the marsh? Or wetlands? Okay, now, getting, oh, have you provided, I keep asking Wes, and he, you know, it said that you all have called out the measurements at the corners for elevation. Do you have an elevation at the building corners that we can document before any lot disturbance occurs? Do you have that number?
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, that should be on the grading and drainage sheet. We do have proposed, or, I'm sorry, we have existing elevations at multiple building corners.
I'm aware of that, we looked at that, but do you have a number?
To clarify, you're talking about the average, the average of the, the average of the existing grade at the corners of the ship.
Can you provide that? I mean, you don't have to do it right now, but I'm just saying that's, I think we'd be interested to know where the starting point is.
The average existing grade at the proposed building footprint.
Correct, yes. And then, I'm going to read this. A 70-foot power easement runs along the southern property line. The 70-foot power easement is located interior to both the property and US 158, 180-foot right-of-way. In the southeastern corner of the lot, there is an access easement. Directly adjacent to the southeastern access agreement is a perpetual easement for sewage treatment. Where are you all at with the 70-foot power easement? Application... Where are you all at with the seventy-foot power easement application and formal statement?
So we suspected that the two lengthiest regulatory reviews would be NCDOT and Dominion Energy. So we initiated those two permit applications or those encroachment agreements early on in the process. As soon as we had, you know, the initial site plan submitted, special use permit site plan submitted. So both of those regulatory agencies are reviewing the applications. Now, we have had a lot of dialogue with Dominion Energy because of trying to, trying to determine what we could do within their power easement because a, as I heard spoken earlier, that's exactly right, that they have a, a right of encroachment agreement and there are guidelines about what's acceptable. Typically, they don't allow structures in general. They, they will allow parking. They will allow certain things and they will allow some extensive grading, but we've tried to, unless the structures are needed for public health and safety like fire hydrants, we've tried to eliminate having structures within that right of way from Dominion Energy. But the, the initial read that we received from Dominion Energy, and it, it's not a formal, here's your encroachment agreement, but we made a determination, they've seen the plan and they were amenable, but they also are awaiting the town review process.
Can you pull up the, I guess, the site plan somewhere where it shows parking and the seventy-foot easement, power easement? I mean, are you, are you aware of what Mr. Finelli's concern is that, you know, what he, what he said, the last thing he saw from you guys indicated that they had preliminary approval to park vehicles under the seventy-foot wide easement? If that approval did not occur, what would you do?
If, if there were any state regulatory agency permits that were not attainable, then those building permits couldn't occur.
And the site plan would not work the way it's shown right now, correct?
Right. And that's, that's why we're certainly agreeable to them being conditions of any.
How long ago have you applied?
It didn't have it in the narrative on when that Dominion Energy was submitted.
You don't, you don't have to look up the date. I'm just curious. Was it a month ago?
Oh, it's been months. I mean, it's.
Nine months ago?
It was at least three months ago.
Have you ever known of Dominion Power on an easement not to allow parking under their easement? Has that occurred to your knowledge?
I guess not, not under my experience.
Okay.
But I believe that they do have that authority.
I just, I'm just reading what Mr. Finelli said, who's looked at a lot of them here. And that's a concern of his is that if we go through all this process, and we don't mind doing it, I mean, that's what we're here for. But if we go through this process and Dominion Power says you can't have parking under our easement, then you guys are going back to the drawing table and submitting a new site plan, right?
And, I mean, I, I'm, I would be surprised if I didn't forward that information, but if, if I haven't forwarded that information to your planning department, then I will forward the, the emails that I've had with Dominion Energy that do express that they haven't had any issues with parking within the right of way.
Okay. Well, we need that.
While you're talking about easements, while we're talking about the easement, the easement, the recreation easement, the joint use fitness easement for Southern Shores Landing, I, I've walked through there and I've seen the fitness equipment and it needs to be cleaned and maybe a little maintenance needs to be done, that kind of thing. But it's an incredible amenity for the, the residents of Southern Shores Landing and for Southern Shores in general. I'm really disappointed at the site plan that places a stormwater box, a hole in the ground, right there, right in the middle of this incredible outdoor amenity that could be a great amenity for the residents of Gengay Crete as well. The residents of these two buildings don't really have any dedicated identified outdoor living space. The church has Stations of the Cross path that is very close to here that walks through there. It's all very interconnected and it's, you've missed a huge opportunity to create something there that is a better stormwater management product that is not a, you know, rectangular hole in the ground. You create habitat and make a, an amenity for all three property owners.
And I, I won't speak too much to that other than just to make sure, to make sure the point hasn't been missed, but these, those are proposed dry infiltration basins. It's not constructed wetlands or it's not wet retention basins. It is designed to be dry to promote for infiltration because we do have separation.
They do have their easement right now, their square right there, which is, is the fit, something called a fit easement or?
Yeah, it's a little fitness, fitness group, you know, the, the trail.
They definitely need some good maintenance there. But it doesn't say, someone made a comment about the wood walkway by others. Quivelet put on their design by others, that needs to be, but we intend to build that walkway over. So you're not walking through it right there. So it will be elevated. Right now, I think it would be a very nice walkway right to it. It accesses the water right there. I don't think we're impeding in it that their easement is still there on top of this property. You know, our intention, there'll be some nice landscaping around there. I think it's going to look better than it does right now with the landscaping cleanup up there and a direct walkway to the water. But we will definitely give the consideration to making that as best as we can.
While you're doing a gamma permit, you might consider doing a boardwalk over the marsh, over the marsh that's part of your property that would be an amenity for the church owners, the, the property owners, the residents of, of your, your development for everyone.
If it's a property, part of the property, those also aren't property there, you see that corner?
Mm-hmm.
Comes back in.
Yeah.
I, I would make a commitment right now. If, if we can meet the rules and the church agrees, and we would love to wrap a walkway around because it would be a benefit to this property as well, a nice little walking area. But we couldn't do that or show that in there as, we just don't own that corner right there, probably, but I, I agree with you. I think there's an opportunity to expand that area. And certainly an opportunity, is this, their walk, their access easement goes to the, the waterway. But, you know, there could be an ability to build something there, a joint structure there that still could happen and it could be an opportunity to do something like that.
I will say, if, if that does end up being the case, now, I would agree, it sounds like a great idea, but if that were, then the Division of Coastal Management would require that, that application be a joint application. So obviously.
That's what neighbors do.
Right.
Speaking of our neighbors, what about the overflow in that stormwater pond going out onto?
The weir?
The weir overflow, we are going into.
The church property?
Church.
That's the path. That's the Stations of the Cross path right there. That's where the stormwater would go.
Yeah, and there's, he's pulling it up.
Why would you put, why would you have overflow going into someone else?
That's, so nothing's being proposed off property. That's an existing swale that's on the subject property. So.
Were that gravel overflow, proposed overflow weir?
So I think he's saying it would go over the weir and into that swale that goes towards the wetland. But the problem is, is that the landscape plan doesn't match up with this because you're going to plant trees right in that same area of the swale.
That's not a swale. That's a mound. That'd go six feet.
I'm just reading the note.
Oh, I see. There is a new grass swale to go in. I see.
Right. So I think it's supposed to catch it, but the, the, the landscape plan doesn't make sense because there's trees planted in that area.
Yeah.
Which is a buffer too.
I think that the church is genuinely concerned of any spillage going their way created by, you know, that infiltration basin with that weir pointing in their direction.
Let's see, it has, so what we've done with the proposed stormwater system is, so the state only requires an inch and a half. So we all know that we're experiencing more events than just the inch and a half. The inch and a half is just a water quality standard. So this basin that you see that's on the screen now, I mean, that's over two foot from the bottom to the storage elevation, but then we have nearly a foot of freeboard over top of that. And then it's, we've got greater than two foot of separation to seasonal high. So what that, I mean, and all these basins are interconnected, they're going to handle much greater than what the state requires us to handle. So, I mean, the, the number of overflows, you're not going to see that frequent of, of overflow events, but when they do occur, I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to capture it and prevent it from leaving the subject parcel.
You say all of the stormwater basins are interconnected?
They are interconnected.
Can you zoom out? And let's see the rest. See that one. All right, go over to the, where's the, that just where it goes in, right? Where's it go out?
No, it, so they all, each one of those, and then if you keep going to the, to the left, that, that's where it's coming in to this basin.
Right.
So those are simply flared in sections at the bottom of that particular infiltration basin. And then because it's a flared in section, it can obviously, it can migrate to go to the next one in series. And then this one has a structure that's got an invert that's all the way at the bottom. And it's, it's flared in section is at, at the bottom of that basin. And then of course it can make it, make its way. So basically if, if one of them is, you know, if there's more runoff in one sub area, it, it's good practice to interconnect those basins so that you're not reliant on these isolated basins.
But these isolated ones, they won't overflow?
Well, they, they all act as a unit. So I mean, there's only one overflow. Yeah.
It flows into a sequence, right. What is the fifty-foot stormwater buffer on the?
So, I'm glad you asked. So you can manage stormwater within that buffer, but you cannot, you have to discharge outside of that fifty-foot.
So that's why your weir is?
That's why it's pulled away and we're not just simply discharging right at the, at the, at the base.
NCDQ regulation?
Yes, sir.
Isn't this, isn't this final one, isn't this final basin within the thirty-foot setback?
It's in the fifty, but it's not discharging within the fifty. You look where the weir is planned.
You're taking everything out of the thirty. Back through the pipe over here, just outside of there. Wes, would you scroll down? Yes, thank you. The eastern boundary that you're showing here, you're going from the same elevation down to the adjacent residences that you are in the stormwater drain. You're going from six feet down to three, dropping right off that parking lot into the neighbor, neighboring houses.
Well, so what we're trying to do is we're trying to not, we're, we're trying to preserve as much of that existing vegetation as we can on that eastern buffer. So in order to do that, we're trying to preserve the existing vegetation, but also limit our disturbance. So our grading, we're trying to tie into existing grades as far away from that boundary as possible. But, I mean, I would make sure you note that, I mean, a hundred percent of that runoff from any impervious surfaces is being captured.
From the impervious surface.
Right.
So can I ask about that real quick? Can you bring up the aerial? This is about the landscaping existing. So is that pretty accurate in terms of the tree cover? Has anything been removed that you're aware? I mean, because the plan, the cover sheet doesn't reference where the existing wooded areas are, where the existing trees are. So I presume you're either removing all of them or not, because you also have a, a note about proposed tree protection area. So I think you do need to clarify what's being retained and what's being removed in terms of existing vegetation, because then you're coming back and adding buffer area in with new plantings and it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And I respect Kathleen because I, I know her work, but you really need a landscape architect to do your landscape plan. And because it bleeds into other plans too, your rendering show landscaping that's not on the plan. It's not clear what you're planting outside of required trees. So you really need a lot more work on your landscape plan.
Wes, when was this GIS time?
This image is from this year. I think it was around the spring, is when they updated it.
Of course, there seems to be a lot more trees for, on the eastern side lower down. When I, when I went by, that's a better picture. So you could see, I could see it better up on that.
Wes, can you zoom down into where the landing trail goes in right there? Whoa. Now, the red line is, is the applicant's property. I didn't, we got easement information from Tom Nash, attorney with Nash and Trampy. And I was looking over those easements. There's a lot of legalese there that the average person wouldn't quite understand, but there's an ingress egress easement, there's a recreational easement, there's a wastewater treatment plant easement, and there's a foreclosure in that group of papers that, that you gave us. What we don't have is an easement for landing trail right there where the cursor is. And there's a lift station right, if you can zoom in on that lift station right there, that doesn't have an easement to it. And in fact, that's on common property in Southern Shores Landing. And then we don't have a copy of the NC Dominion Power easement either. So.
Well, Chairman, let me, let me speak to one thing I heard you say about not having the easement documentation for the, the sewer pump station. So in that package of easements, there was, basically all of that common area is, and it says it in that recorded easement document, that it, that it, that is the wastewater utility easement, because they also, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, there's reuse disposal too. So obviously, the owner of that plant has to have easement over all of those areas. And, and that, that line right there is for the plant.
Right. But that, that lift station appears to be on common property, not owned by, the, the next piece over is a separate, if you click on that and see the red line pop up, Wes, for ownership next door right. Okay. And then go to the east to the, to the retaining retention pond. That's another one. But just curious why that is on common property in Southern Shores Landing?
It, so it's because the, the utility has an easement over. an easement over all of that common area for wastewater utilities. That's what's in one of the easement documents in the, in the subsidies. The utility, the owner of the utility.
And, so what you're saying is that that lift station...
It's in a, it's in a utility easement, in the nature that it is actually in that, in the common area.
And it specifies that lift, that lift right there, a lift station.
It actually speaks to all of the common area. Because I believe the utility, I'm sure the utility will speak, if I'm speaking incorrectly, the utility maintains quite a bit of the sewer plumbing within that whole Southern Shores Landing into common areas.
Well, it's definitely needed, but I'm just questioning why it's on Southern Shores Landing common property, owned by the Vornedors, I believe. They own all the common property there. The family, the Vornedor family. Are they, anybody in contact with that family? That you're aware of, either? Wes, you said you have a hard time making contact with them via certified mail?
Yeah, whenever we've had to send certified letters to the address given for Vornedor, we never get the green card back, and I've never had a response from them.
So how do you get, if that's part of your disposal option, how do you legitimize your use of that land?
So, we already have, I mean, the applicant already has the easement.
May I ask pardon?
The applicant is the owner of the utility, the utility has rights to that easement. So they could, they could tie into that lift station.
Well, that's the lift station part of the plan. And you have to have a pump station going out to these common areas, right? Which is all between the houses and behind the houses and everything like that, so how, how do you bring in extra flow? And use the common area for disposal? Without getting an easement?
So, the easement's already in place, and the plant already has permitted capacity. And the proposed sewerage usage is within that plant capacity.
Right.
Now, we'll still obviously have to apply to divisional water quality for the wastewater line extension, but the the capacity's there, and the disposal capacity's there, by nature of those utility.
Has any of that common area ever been used for disposal?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, you've got sprayheads, you've got pumps, you've got pipes underground, but it's all under yards throughout the whole development, so if your infiltration pond isn't functioning properly, you'd have, and you, F1 was meeting standards, you'd have to use that common area, which I don't know whether anybody's seen it work.
Do you have an easement that we haven't seen yet on that stub of landing drive that goes from 158 into Southern Shores Landing?
Yeah, so, the, the shared access easement for ingress egress for that shared entrance, that was also in the packet of recorded, I mean, these were, I pulled them from the registered deeds, so they're recorded at Derrick County Courthouse.
So we, we have that in, in that package of easements that you
You should.
Which one would it, which one would it be on the list?
What is in F-28? No, hold on, that's existing access easements and easements for the benefit? I mean, I would first look at F-28, number four. I apologize, these types of questions, I mean, these are, these should have been ironed out before tonight, I mean, quite frankly.
I agree on your end too.
I mean, if you don't, if the town doesn't have something, it's a burden on us.
You've given us, you've given us a narrative, and we intend to go down and question everything that's on there. It's our right as the planning board, and we will intend to do that. That's why I said at the beginning, this ain't gonna happen tonight, and it might not happen in October, but we're gonna get to the end of this and make our recommendation, but it's our right, and just as long as we make reasonable progress, we can move forward. Is that okay?
Appreciate that.
I'm up for calling it a night.
Okay.
I mean, we have a lot of questions, and I think the next time that we meet, we'll certainly give you a better place to spread out. I don't think it's fair that you're worrying about dropping papers and pins and stuff on the floor, so we'll do a better job at that, but I think this will be a pretty good stopping point for our discussion tonight on this, so I'm gonna thank you all for coming, and we will continue this in October at our regularly scheduled board meeting, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, there is a public sign-up sheet here, there's one name on it. Does anyone want to speak at this time?
Yes, my name is Nellie Healy, I live at 5205 Barlow Lane, so I get to go by Crowatan Highway every day, pretty much for everything. And I just kind of feel we're at a tipping point here, where we have maximized all the stuff that can be built and big things, like more restaurants and more shopping centers and more, and that's a big concern, and I know that when I come home in the fall and I'm heading this way, there is a blinding light. You all realize that? You know that orange big glow? And those people pulling out of that development, when that orange glow is there, are gonna get killed. It's as simple as that, they're just gonna get killed. And since we're talking about it, you know, SAGA has been a contributor to the community, has built a lot of housing, has made a lot of money. That's the name of the game, right? Make a lot of money, build housing. But then you have a situation now where greed and progress are intersecting. There's a problem here, okay? And every little bit of green space, I go by Kill Devil Hills every day, and every drop of green space there is pretty much gone. It's starting to look like honky-tonk. And we don't need to look like honky-tonk. That's not our function. That's Myrtle Beach, that's Ocean City, those are those places, that's where those people went to live. We came here to have our homes, to have some peace, some quiet, and now it's like this, the place is buzzing, twenty-four seven. I go out at seven o'clock in the morning, boom, 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 boom. Three o'clock in the afternoon, four o'clock in the afternoon. It's a constant, it's a constant. So do we need thirty-six more units of condominium housing for wealthy people who may put them up for rent? I don't think so. You know? Do we need to be blinded so that when we're going down Crowatan Highway on a fall day, and those cars are whipping out of there because they're coming out of the restaurant, they're coming out of the office space, and they're going in, and I feel sorry for the guy on that corner who has that house. Did you see his lot? He has no lot. He doesn't have anything. So here, this, let's think outside of the box, everybody. Let's think like a community, because this gentleman brought up the fact of community. Okay, so what is one of the responsibilities of community? To make the community better. And how do you make a community better? How about some green space? Okay, let's talk about that space as a piece of greenery, that maybe the town, or maybe in conjunction with everyone together, we can purchase and leave it alone. I have a seven-foot elevation on Barlow Lane. The situation with global warming has made it so that the water is coming to the tip of my house. That thing has a ten-foot clearance on the road, and then it goes down like this, or am I blind? So you mean to tell me that the people who are gonna be in there, their cars are not gonna be totally flooded whenever there's a rainstorm? Has anybody looked at what's happening in Manio, in downtown Manio, all the time? So we're gonna be selling properties to people who are not gonna really be able to use them, because every time that thing floods, and you know that's gonna flood. I don't care what the, this gentleman says. You know, all you gotta do is look around you, and we as residents know what floods. You know, we have to go up to the school to get out of the water here when there's something big happening. So, let's take that space, let's think about it as a green space. As a green space where your child and my grandchild can go and ride on their bike, and maybe go fish there on the corner, or whatever. Doughty Park, remember Doughty Park? I've been here close to thirty years. That used to be honky-tonk, you know, the little rides and everything, and look what they turned it into, and how wonderful it is for everybody. Why can't Southern Shores, and those of us around Southern Shores who live in it, have the same thing? We don't really have a park. Doug has a boardwalk, why don't we have a boardwalk? So that they could come down from the church and walk, so that we could ride our bikes, so that I could cross the street and not have to be then dealing with that extra traffic that I don't want to have to deal with. And that extra, so let's think of it as a community, maybe MAGA, I mean, not MAGA, excuse me, maybe, what's, what's, SAGA, sorry. Slip of the tongue. Maybe SAGA would like to donate that space to the community, since they've made so much money from our community over the years. They've made plenty of big bucks. So where does greed and progress intersect? Okay, I want to see progress. I don't like greed. And this is just about greed. They're gonna divide those units up to twenty-five little apartments, and this and that, and four people living in there, and rentals coming in and out of there. We know what's gonna happen. Thank you.
You want to speak? Oh, sorry.
Where's the lawyer?
I'm not a public speaker. I'm Katie Foster, I own 156 Chickahawke Trail, and my family also owns a house on Wax Myrtle, and then my other side of the family owns a house on Wax Myrtle. And I just want to say, I just found out about this today, maybe that's my fault, but next time I will be here and I will bring more people. And I think a lot of other, I think you guys will too, and people will know about this, because we do have to protect what we have. Like, this is, this is our heaven. Like, we don't want it to become something else. That's all.
Thank you.
Okay, I didn't prepare anything. This, I'm Emily Osband, and I own the property across the street, which is Islander Flags and so on. So I just want to express real concern about the traffic, because I've been dealing for many, many years, trying to have a business right across the street that no one can get in and out of. And I have asked every official for many, many years, gee, I sure would like to have a stoplight, because on Saturday and Sunday, I have no business, but of course, they just look at me and say, oh, no, no, you don't qualify for a stoplight, you know? Out of the question. I really, it's really hard for me to imagine how it could get much worse than it already is in the traffic, and while I was sitting here, the one thing that occurred to me is that if you think about coming up the bypass, then you pass, you know, Kitty Hawk, Duck Woods and Kitty Hawk School and so on, well, it's dark. Like, we've never been open at night, because there's nobody up there at night. And then you go on to OBX Chevrolet, they're not open at night. Nothing's open at night on that stretch, so it would be the first time, if there were a restaurant, that people would be trying to navigate that traffic actually in the dark. You know, which it's almost impossible in the light, but I can't, you know, I just can't see people trying to figure all that out at night, because we've just never, am I correct about that? I mean, there's nothing open in there at night, is there?
Seven-Eleven.
Oh, well, that, oh, well, they made a special turn-in lane and access for them, and they have a light. Okay, you're right. I didn't, I couldn't get any of that. And then, and then, and then to change the subject a little bit, to be very selfish, if this does happen and they get a traffic light, I would love for it to be shared with my entrance. Put the entrance wherever the traffic light is. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, anyone else wish to speak? Sir?
So my name's, damn. Hits close to home, because I I grew up in Jingay Creek, and it's it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful place, and I know I'm speaking on behalf of the entire community. I, I'm sorry, I told myself I wouldn't get emotional over this, but it hits close to home. I live on 5205 Barlow Lane with excuse me, with Nellie and Robert, and Jingay Creek, it's teeming with wildlife. It's beautiful. If you ever have the opportunity to kayak down it, you'll see you know, the diverse wildlife it has to offer. It's a beautiful place. Growing up, I remember driving, you know, down to Manio and crossing the bridge, and you see what development looks like, and then you also get to see the beauty and the majestic nature, you know, on the south side. Over by that marina, and I remember as a kid thinking, you know, the architecture that, you know, man built, you know, in that marina was really cool-looking. And I'd look over, you know, south and see, you know, the marshlands, and you know, just kind of think, not too much of it. As I've gotten older, I see that we live on a sandbar, and these storms, they have impacts. We haven't even gotten hit by a big storm in a long time. It's worth noting that a major hurricane hasn't touched down in a long time. Major as in a category three and higher. We have no idea what the ramifications in the flooding with building structures of this magnitude on wetlands. It's gonna sink. It's a logistical nightmare. It was interesting to see everyone kind of picking holes in the plan. There's a lot of holes, a lot, and I would hate to see something like this. It's not gonna age well, I can tell you that right now. I'm not a geologist. The topography of Jingay Creek has already changed a lot in the past ten years. Just the nor'easter, December twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, this past, this past year. So we had the waters come up. I live on Jingay Creek, it came all the way up to the house, and then it froze over. The marshland just by that storm alone was drastically affected and changing. It's a very dynamic space. So if we build on that land with something you know, of this scale, with the amount of weight, with the you know, with all the dynamics, you know, with, you know, the sewage and all that, it's just gonna have so many ramifications that will affect the community in a lot of negative ways, and I don't see a lot of public utility, you know, involved with this project, and you know, I'd really like to urge caution, you know, to anyone. I mean, even, even from their standpoint, like, you know, it's good to have the spirit of entrepreneurship, but it's, it's a disaster, and hopefully it's not a sign of things to come, you know, to this community. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Tim Baker again. I just wanted a quick question. Wes, you commented in your remarks about the marina being discontinued, or recommendations not to continue with the marina. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Currently, the ordinance doesn't allow marinas or piers or docks, so we cannot approve it as part of the site plan.
Okay. Okay, so those slips will not be included in the recommendation going forward?
Correct.
Copy that.
Good evening, everybody. Ann Schirdsma, 232 North Dogwood Trail. I'd like to start by thanking all of you for going over this application pain, in a painstaking manner, and for asking excellent questions, getting to the nitty gritty, which frankly, I can't begin to access myself. I have a hard time just poring over this site narrative and trying to sort out these numbers and where things are. But I'm gonna try my hardest to figure it all out. And I appreciate all your questions. I also wanted to say something to the audience. Thank you all for being here, for all of your comments. I generally agree with everything you said. Unfortunately, you're here more than a year after we started talking about this. And that's really unfortunate, because there's a lot of history that has occurred in the past. It's been more than a year since the town enacted the multi-use development ordinance that is even allowing this development to be considered. Because it is a commercial property, but until last year, there was no such thing as multi-use development in Southern Shores. That was a major change in our town code. And that went through the planning board, again, in a painstaking fashion. And there was a difference of opinion between the planning board and the town council. Some of what you're hearing tonight having to do with how you calculate lap lock coverage, how large the acreage is. There's a lot of water under the bridge here. I, I'm, I wish you'd come sooner. I'm glad you're here now. And I, I think we can be very thankful that the planning board is kind of putting the brakes on and taking this slowly. But I also want to draw something else to your attention. Believe it or not, we have an election going on. I haven't seen an election sign anywhere yet. I haven't seen a meet and greet notice. You, most of you probably don't know who's running for office. But we have three positions that are up for election on our town council, and four people running for these offices. Mayor Pro Tem Matt Neal is running for reelection, and I believe he's the only candidate in this room tonight. I don't see the other three. Please note on your calendars, October 2nd, 7 o'clock to 8:30 PM in this building, there will be a forum, a candidates forum. The League of Women Voters of Dare County is sponsoring it. Please attend. Ask the candidates about this. Ask them where they stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Anyone else? Must be getting hungry. Okay, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna close the public comment. And next item is planning board member comments. Robert, I'll start with you and run this way. I don't have anything.
No comment.
No comment. Um, I will just say thank you all for digging in hard. We have, everyone sitting up here has spent extra time with Wes on a one by one or, or two members. And Wes has been most gracious in giving his time and expertise on what we're faced with. I really appreciate you, Wes, going, you know, to the length. But we are gonna go slow on this. We're not in any hurry. And, you know, I can tell it upset the applicant a little bit, but that's just part of, of what we are gonna do up here. And this is our town, and we're gonna get it right. It may not be what everybody wants in this room, but we're gonna make a real hard effort to hold the applicant accountable and try, try to dial down a little bit of the grandiose proposal that we have in front of us. It will, it'll be painstaking. It probably won't be too exciting. I'm surprised this many people have stayed till the end. But I really appreciate you coming and come back in October. Now, Michael, you got anything over there? You got the big seat over there. That's where I want to sit next to.
I can spread out over here, yeah. No, no, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to say Wes really did an incredible amount of work. You see this, and it all goes through him before it comes here. So the amount of work Wes has done is incredible. And, you know.
Didn't agree more.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I will, I will say, Wes did put the most positive spin on this I've ever seen. He said he thinks he recommends approval with the following changes. And then he goes on to.
And there's, there's some big changes that the applicant didn't agree with tonight. So we will talk about that hopefully in October. So with that all, ask Wes if he has any announcements?
The next meeting date in October is October 16th, just so everyone's aware. Obviously, this will be on the agenda as well as, well, if there's time, we all can get to the lock with ZTA. But if not, we'll push it back. But the next regular meeting date is October 16th, 5 o'clock here in this room.
Okay. Everybody got that, October 16th? Okay, I'm gonna call for a motion.
I'm making a motion that we adjourn.
All in favor? Ah, opposed, none. Thank y'all for coming. Hey, Kitty Hawk School, yearbook?